Self, present. Mr. McBride, present. Ms. Duhai?
Here.
Mr. Rock, present. Mr. Rosetti?
Present.
Mr. Ravitch?
Here.
Ms. Zager? I would like to ask everyone to stand for the blooded allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask all the commissioners to review the meeting minutes from our last meeting June 24th. Please advise us any questions, comments, complaints, dispelling.
To Chairman, I will give the minutes. Meeting June 24th, 2024, be accepted.
Stand. Myself abstained. Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Ms. Rosetti?
Aye.
Mr. Ravitch?
Aye.
Ms. Duhai?
Yes.
Ms. Zager? Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone to sign up to speak this evening, Mr. Khan? First agenda item this evening, public hearing on lot 20, Washington Avenue. There's a request being made for zoning amendments. There's only ordinance request for special use. The vote on those items. Mr. Khan, is there any additional background on this item for the commission?
Yeah, so the petitioner, Ms. Nieberger, who's also the owner of the property, is requesting a state of map amendment for rezoning from M1 to R2. Text amendment to section 672B of the Hampshire zoning ordinance to permit greenhouses as special use in R2 zoning district, and requesting a special use to allow that greenhouse subject property. Regarding the map amendment rezoning, a while back, properties on Washington Avenue south of the old tracks were, well, not all of them, but majority of them were rezoned to R2. That was residential, there was a few of them that were somehow forgotten, don't know the whole history on why it was. So this is going to make it consistent with the comprehensive plan and also the adjacent zoning uses for this. The lot itself is sized for residential property, can't develop it as a manufacturing or industrial use, so it makes sense to rezone it to R2, staff's perspective. On the second request is a text amendment to the zone, R2 zoning district, to allow greenhouse as a special use. The petitioner owner has constructed a greenhouse on that property and is wanting to allow to continue using it as a greenhouse. So that's what the text amendment would allow us to request a special use. So the special use is then requesting approval for that greenhouse to be the principal structure in some property. There's findings, staff provided findings of facts for each one of the requests. Just a reminder, there is no findings of facts or text amendments for the zoning ordinance, so really what it says, it just has to be consistent with the overall zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan. So it's a pretty wide open finding, but it's not technically a finding for the zoning ordinance, such as we have a special use and map amendments. Are there any questions for staff before I turn it over to the petitioner?
I believe so, Mr. Khan.
Do you have anything you want to add?
I have no idea what's happening. Um, yeah, basically, Alicia's my neighbor in-
The adjoining property.
-adjoining property. I think at once, at one point, they were one and then divided, and I think that might be how previous owners-
It's tell- Because you can't see.
Oh, sorry.
Do you want to come up to the podium?
Oh, damn it. So, yeah, so basically, I think at one point, our properties were like one and then I got divided, so that might be how it slipped through the cracks. When we purchased the property, I just wanted, because I can have a little sacred space that I could have a garden with, and my intention was to share the space with the neighbors because they, as soon as I got it, they were like, you're not building a house, are you? Because it's just been an empty lot for them to have their kids play in, and I said no, and they're both avid gardeners, so I figured we'd all just kind of garden together, and I had intentions of working, and I already reached out to the NRCS to have them help me kind of figure out what would be the right use for the property and kind of make it functional, and then I do want to give back to my community, so I figured any extra produce could be free or donated to the food pantry. And that's it. Yeah.
Do you live nearby?
I actually used to live on Jackson, and now I live in Tuscaney Woods, and I'm one of Brian's, like, neighbors.
Is it true that what the structure that's on the property now was built without permit?
So when we purchased the property, we didn't know it was zoned industrial. We ran the impression that it was zoned residential, and then I've talked to Mo about it. I called the village when we were building it, and I unfortunately can't remember who I spoke to, but his verbiage was like, it's a freestanding structure, it's not a shed, and it's not attached to anything, so like, I was under the impression that it wasn't like a big deal, so then we did build it, and then I was actually reaching out to get an address because I was just trying to figure out how to do that, and I didn't want to like bother her with anything.
A lot of her mail was coming for her, mostly-
Yeah, to her house.
-just mail to my address instead of that one, because they, in the past, the county had it messed up and had that parcel as 278 Washington, which is actually our address.
So I reached out to, I can't remember if I reached out to the village first or the post office, and they all kind of had me going in circles, and then I reached out to Kane County, and then they told me to come back to the village, and then that's when Mo and I got ahold of each other, and he was like, actually, we need to talk to you about this. So then I was like, okay, what do we do? Like, how do we fix this? And then we're here.
What kind of structure is it? What's it made of?
So like, the core structure is all new wood. I don't know.
So it's a wood building?
Yeah, and then I repurposed, I found a bunch of like old donated windows to do the windows, and then there was a lot of like dead trees on the property, so we repurposed those to make the front porch of it. And then all the back wall was, we found first cuts from the lumber mill and just put that up there.
Is it in the middle of the property or set back, or where is it in relation to this rectangle?
Uh, so it's like, it's not directly centered, it's a little set back and off to the left, because I wanted to save room for a garden on the right.
Back away from the street and left towards 260?
Correct. Yeah.
Thank you.
Better than anything I could have built here if I had a lot of-
Yeah. I think some of the neighbors were the ones like mowing it and keeping it, because it was like empty for a really long time, so.
It was vacant, and we had been mowing it for about six years, so pretty excited enough to have to do that for a while.
Any questions for the petitioner?
Staff's moving seems comprehensive.
If it's appropriate, there are five conditions of approval, so I would ask that the commission review those, because staff recommends those may add after the recommendation. Although a recommendation for approval, that's the choice. So I just don't want that to go without the staff. That should be second to last page of the document. Staff has five recommended, recommended conditions of approval, so if the commission votes to recommend approval, we ask for these five conditions to be placed. The first one is the building permit for the greenhouse structure to be submitted to the village within 45 days of permission for approval. The second one is destruction or any modification to the greenhouse begin within 30 days of the permit issuance. The third one is destruction or any modification be completed within one year of the permit issuance. The fourth one is the proposed greenhouse structure only be utilized by the property owner, and the fifth one is the proposed greenhouse structure showing me all those code requirements and regulations. Reasons for number four specifically is because if it becomes a public greenhouse or use, then there's parking regulations that apply to it, and there's, and it's for residential size lot, it's going to be very difficult to put parking, and you get more regulations that apply to it, so it becomes even more a complicated matter. So that's why we're asking for it to be used by the property of residential guarding for this.
Out of curiosity, Mr. Khan, on item number two, construction or any modification to the greenhouse structure begin within, began within 30 days, assuming, within 30 days of the permit issuance or the special use shall be null and void. So out of curiosity, just on the verbiage, the 30 days prior to, 30 days post?
So say the permits issued tomorrow, they have 30 days-
They can't do anything for 30 days?
No, they have started work within 30 days. If I, if I, yeah, within 30 days of it, the work has to start.
Is that if the permit issuer finds something that wasn't up to code and has to be brought? Add just a wording on that, because it's a little vague.
Mr. Khan, are you saying that the staff recommends approval of this?
It needs findings of facts, so I can review those if you like. So for the map amendment, the rezoning needs findings of facts, so findings of facts for map amendments and rezoning are existing uses of properties in the general area of property inspection, for the existing uses of all residential and all residential size lots, so it needs that finding. The zoning classification of properties in the general area of property inspection, the general zoning is R2, which is what the request is for. The suitability of a property in question to the uses permitted under the existing zoning classification, so it can be used as an industrial property based on the lot size of the subject property, the trend of development, if any, in the general area of the property, the trend is residential uses or residential construction or accessory to residential uses, and the objects of the current land use plan, so the future land use plan has this as a residential zoning area, so it needs those findings of facts for map amendment rezoning. Again, there's no text amendment findings of facts, it's just generally laws, because it's the comprehensive plan.
It's not technically required, but the village staff still did due diligence.
Is there electric and water on this?
Currently, there's not water into the service.
That's a requirement of the building department, not necessarily zoning.
What was your question?
That's a building department, when they're going for permit, that's just not necessarily zoning.
I was just curious to see how far you're getting already in the building process. I mean, it looks like it happens.
Accessory buildings such as sheds and greenhouses, to my understanding, are not permitted in a lot with outer residence, without a residence.
Correct.
With that in mind, why is the staff approving, why is the staff recommending approvals?
That's, that's the special use provision, like how in a residential district, you could have a special use for a church or a nurse, a daycare. We're proposing to add a greenhouse as a primary structure with special use provision. So it would be the primary structure on this plot of land if we were to approve the special use incorporation into the zoning code. So it's, we're adding greenhouses as a approved special use in general for R2 districts, and then we're enacting that new provision and saying, the special use of a greenhouse on this property is acceptable.
But to my question, there's no residence on the property, and according to my understanding, accessory buildings are not permitted without a residence.
This wouldn't be an accessory building, it would be the primary building with the use of a greenhouse.
Under the case of the special use.
So we're not talking about a greenhouse anymore, now we're talking about a home.
No, we're talking about a greenhouse being used as the primary structure in place of a home on that lot.
Under the special use.
With water, sewer, gas, electric?
Not necessarily, that's up to the building department, but it's just this plot of land, the primary use would be a greenhouse. And in general, we're saying, in the R2 zoning district, we agree that a greenhouse as a primary use for a plot of land without an additional structure, no residence, no church, no school, it's acceptable to have a primary use of a greenhouse. If we accept the text amendment for R2.
It's the special use.
Yes.
Would it help you guys to have, I'm sorry to interrupt, would it help you guys to have any history on Washington, as somebody who's lived there for a while? I don't know that it would or not.
No offense, no ma'am.
Yeah. Yeah, but in similar communities, greenhouses, community gardens, you know, this type of use is pretty typical to see in a residential community as the primary use, primary use for lots.
I can direct a question to Mr. Khan. Holding from our handwriting, this is one of the options offered was to apply for zoning entitlements to bring property and use into compliance with zoning ordinance. Now, my question is, is this is one of the options, what are the others?
To be tear down and not requested zoning entitlements. Sorry, tear it down and not apply for any zoning entitlements, so not do nothing essentially except to remove the structure.
So there are two options?
Yeah.
One is approved this, and one is not approved.
Right.
In which case, the structure has to be removed?
Correct.
There is no other option other than removing the structure?
Correct.
Structure can't be invented?
No, because they need to get the zoning approval first to, for us to issue a building permit, because right now it's not a permitted structure, permitted use, we can't issue a building permit. That's like saying if you want to go in the M1 and build a home in the M1, you can issue a building permit, because the land use is not permitted in the M1.
I think in terms of what's proposed right now, in terms of, we've got the text amendment, we've got the rezoning classification, and then we have the special use. The map amendment, I think, is fairly straightforward.
Right.
R2 makes sense for this property. The text amendment, you know, divorcing from the idea of this specific property, just talking in general, R2 districts, does it make sense for, in Hampshire, a plot of land that is owned R2, to be a primary use of a greenhouse? My, my personal opinion is that seems reasonable, it seems consistent with other communities. I know we might have differing opinions. So that would be the text amendment, and then the special use would be specific property, because special uses are very property situational dependent, does it make sense for this specific property to meet that greenhouse special use?
Right. Did we need to open a public hearing on this one?
We're in a public hearing at this point.
On this particular one, we don't need a public hearing because it's not actually-
No, yeah, you didn't.
It's, it's on the-
Yes. You can open the public hearing, so let's say comments. Does I have to make a motion to open the public hearing?
No.
I'm just calling the public hearing open at 7:20. If I could get the streets.
Can I decide?
No, you can just come to the board.
Any additional? Does she have to be sworn?
Yeah, I can do that. Do you guys hear what I can, what you say is the truth?
Yes, sir. My name is Alicia Malchuski, I live at 278, which is the, 278 Washington Avenue, which is the east adjoining property to parcel 20. We've lived there since 2016, and when we purchased our home, we actually had to go through the zoning process as well, because our home was previously also zoned as M1 or manufacturing or stuff. I've heard different words, so excuse me if manufacturing is not interchangeable with industrial, and they did that to our property at 278, as well as when our neighbors bought, I believe, a year or two later, they also rezoned 260, and my understanding after speaking with someone who was previously either on the village board or part of some sort of commission with the village, essentially someone that had lived their whole life in Hampshire, said that that entire portion of Washington, at one point, because of the industrial companies that are on the north side of railroad tracks on Keys, that entire street, when things originally were zoned, was zoned as industrial and manufacturing, but just because people had lived there for 20, 40, 60 years, it hadn't been zoned all at once, and so every time a property on, I don't know if it's all of Washington or just the north side of Washington, changed ownership, they went through and just rezoned it one at a time, because I guess maybe it was less work, I'm not, I'm not sure. Yeah, so that, that was my, so they did, I don't know if you guys might have records of it, at the different properties, adjoining properties, that they were rezoned as well, because some of the properties were rentals and some of them were residential, but we've had a great time with, with Sam and her husband, both, and we met their kids, and they seemed to be respectful of the property, and the, between myself and two of the other neighbors, we had been mowing it since we moved in in 2016, because it was very vacant and very overgrown and a bit of an eyesore, frankly, and we had, I had been through with the public works department with, you know, can we get somebody to mow it, you can bill the owners, and I guess the owners also were owners of different properties in town, and they had kind of moved out of town, and I think there were some employees of the village had even kind of looked on social media to try to get ahold of them and get contact numbers, they were not able to, because we really wanted the neighborhood to look good and things, we didn't want our property values to drop essentially, because it wasn't being taken care of. So we all had rotated mowing it for several years, and even got a riding mower because we knew we'd be mowing it, and it definitely, upkeep has not been an issue with them there, so it was a very welcome thing, because the two adjoining properties, we were both gardeners as well, and so we were all about pollinators and getting more pollinators to come, so that our plans would look a little bit better, and we definitely liked the idea of her being able to donate excess produce to the pantry, and we just want to see the community do well for it, so we're, we get, she gets thumbs ups from us, so. Looking at it now, I know that a lot of the other adjoining properties, and I know you were talking about how similar situations exist in other communities, in this community, the same situation happened with multiple properties on Washington, so I don't know that this would be much different than that being rezoned, at least as far as that condition exists for going from M1 to residential, so that's my view then.
Thank you.
I guess who said join us?
That is Erin Kieran, I believe, she is one of the judge attorneys.
Oh. She's filling in for Mr. Sully?
Yes.
Yeah. Doing a fine job.
Thank you.
Comments, concerns, discussion, lot 20, Washington Avenue. Does anyone care to make a motion, or I will entertain a motion?
So before you do that, I did provide a recommended, recommended motion that can be read by any of the commissioners, or if you want, break apart the three items and draw them independently from that.
Mo, break, yeah, break up parts of three, please. You better, yeah, thank you.
All right, so let's break apart the three. Break apart the three, and so do a motion on the two last.
Anyone care to make a motion, or I will entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion for going with a map amendment from M1 to R2.
Item number one, request for map amendment rezoning from M1 restricted industrial districts to R2 single family residence districts. Call Mr. Berman? Ms. Zager?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Aye.
Ms. Duhai?
Yes.
Mr. Ravitch?
Aye.
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Item number two, request for text amendments to section 672B of the Hampshire zoning ordinance to permit greenhouses a special use in the R2 zoning district. Do I have a motion? Someone would like to make that motion? Ms. Zager?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Aye.
Ms. Duhai?
Yes.
Mr. Ravitch?
Aye.
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Item number three on the agenda, request for special use per section 672B of the Hampshire zoning ordinance to permit a greenhouse. I will entertain a motion, someone would like to make a motion? So moved with the five recommendations made by staff?
Second.
Ms. Zager?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Aye.
Ms. Duhai?
Yes.
Mr. Ravitch?
Aye.
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Close is not all of the items on this one, correct?
What's that?
It closes out all of the items on this one, correct?
Yep.
Good. We'll close the public hearing for agenda item A at 7:29 PM.
Thank you. Put steel to the petitioner on the next steps, please.
I was kind of curious, I only noticed two notices of public notice, to reuse that word again, unless I'm mistaken, there is only two records of public notice in our agenda package, so that's why I was a little confused on the first one.
The notice for this first case was not one comprehensive, it included all the items.
Good. Agenda item B, case number PZC 24-03, I open the public hearing at 7:30. Mr. Khan, context, history?
Yes, so I'm not sure if the commissioner saw my email, it says around 5 o'clock, I don't expect you to guess either, because it's not down solely. There are some questions on whether the barriers could be hurt or not, so I had a discussion with legal, the barriers can be hurt, but there's questions about what easements are existing in the backyard of Royal and Champion, so before we proceed, I want to get you all that information, and legal and engineering and myself, I'm going to convene on what, if there is infrastructure in there, what would happen if, when the parties exercise the right, if that could cause a structure to be removed, we want that to be clear with the petitioner, so they're aware of the cost back that goes into it, so say, I mean, ComEd, AT&amp;T, and MediaCom have rights to the easement, so say ComEd had to dig up in the easement and redo the cables and power lines, that the petitioner understands the whole weight of that. Yeah, tabling, yeah.
Until our next appointment.
Yeah, so it can be either August 12th or August 26th, right now I don't have anything on the agenda for the 12th, I do have items on the agenda for the 26th.
Mr. McBride, motion to table this item, agenda, item B, till, how should I officially phrase that, I can't really state, August 12th?
August 26th.
August 26th?
Yes.
Motion has been made, it'll be in a second.
A second.
Myself, aye, Ms. McBride?
Aye.
Ms. Rosetti?
Aye.
Ms. Ravitch?
Aye.
Ms. Duhae?
Yes.
Ms. Seeger?
Aye.
I do not myself have any old business, I don't believe we have any recurring or retroactive old business to mention, nor do I have any announcements this evening.
I'd like to thank you for moving all the comments, I appreciate that.
Any of the other commissioners have any announcements? If I can collect the admissions, can we pass number two?
Second.
Please, number five. I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 7:33 PM.
Second.
So, aye, Ms. Ravitch?
Aye.
Ms. Duhae?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Aye.
Ms. Rosetti?
Aye.
Ms. Seeger?
Yes.
Thank you, Erin.
Bye, everyone, have a nice night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schneber, for sure.
I can breathe?
You're not going to prison, so...
I have no idea what I'm doing, okay? We're lucky I know where I am.
So this will work? Seriously?
Okay.
Sorry to hear that. Yeah.